Let's begin to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for your blessings you've bestowed upon us, especially Jesus Christ and His finished work on the cross. We ask that you continue to bless us right now by falling fresh on our city council and our mayor with the meeting on tonight, the decisions that will benefit the citizens of Bonner Springs and bring you glory and honor. Lord, teach us to love one another as you have loved us and let us continue to pray earnestly for the Ukrainians. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
First, we'll have an opportunity for individuals from the community to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the first item, the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the March fourteenth city council meeting, claims for city operations, appointments to boards and commissions, and the public use request for farmers market in 2022. Anything to be pulled by staff? Citizens? Council, questions, concerns, comments?
I do have one question on item number four for the public use request. I just want to make sure, have accommodations been made for the businesses on Oak that have rear entrances, or do they do not need access on those mornings?
Let's go ahead and pull that and we'll discuss it separately.
Then list, if you could, pull item number four then.
Item number four will be pulled and we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for items one through three, the minutes, claims for city operation, and appointments to boards and commissions. Seeing no other questions or concerns, vote please. Oh, no, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and selected by Mr. Shannon. Vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. We'll go right on to number four. If you'd like to come forward, staff would like to come forward and talk about and introduce and all that, the farmers market for 2022.
Justine Spees, Recreation Manager, and tonight with me is the Market Manager.
Hi, I'm Dejri.
Hello.
Can you repeat the question?
Please.
Would you like a motion on the floor first?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the public use request for the 2022 farmers market.
Second.
So moved.
And then, just curiosity, there's two or three businesses on Oak that have rear entrances. Will they have access to their businesses, or have you consulted with them and they don't need access in the morning to those businesses?
I'm not sure if we, I don't believe we've contacted everyone. I know we talked to Nationwide, they wouldn't need it, but we'll follow up with those businesses for sure.
And that'd be Ya'uzah. Isn't that what it's called still?
Yeah, and I think-
And Sunflower Embroidery, those two have rear exits, but they also have front entrances. So it may not be-
I didn't know if they needed access to those rires for deliveries or anything, so.
We'll check to see if they have anything during Saturday mornings.
Make accommodations if necessary, but otherwise, that's it.
Anything else?
Nothing here.
Sir? I noticed how you were closing the streets, closing it at Nationwide and closing the entrance into the Centennial Park.
It should be just before the parking lot entrance and then that went into Centennial and also to the street side as well. And that would be for safe crossing for pedestrians to go to Centennial Park for any activities that the market might be having, also parking for participants.
Exactly, and that's why I thought if you closed the parking lot, access on the second street that the farmers market's going to be in, and closed second street, that would, on the east side of that drive, you would still be able to access Centennial Park through that entrance. Because right now, you're, some people will be funneled through that private parking lot right behind the building that has like four parking spaces in it. And if you close off that entrance to the Centennial Park entrance on second, you would limit people's ability to park, go to the farmers market and park.
Okay, I see where I have that line there. So my intention is not to have-
If you closed it there and there?
I would agree with that. So I didn't, I don't want that line blocking the second to Centennial. That one, yes. That one I want to be disappeared. And then moving that line further back.
Right here?
Yes.
And what about this parking lot?
That would be blocked off.
Okay.
Okay, so that answers the question then.
That's what I thought.
I'm a visual person, sorry.
As am I, I almost used colored markers on my- Yeah, but those two, correcting those two closings, I think will add a lot of flow of traffic and that would benefit primarily the farmers market. I know from the days behind the, when it was in the parking lot behind the funeral home, that traffic flow helped a lot, even for a small number of cars. It really helped a lot and those banners, pennants helped with that too. And that took a lot of time to put out, but now just closing those two, I think is the main thing you'd have to do and you'd still be able to have people park in Centennial Park and come to your thing safely. Please, that seemed okay?
I was agreeing.
Drive into Centennial Park and out, and in, and out.
One, one thing, that little parking lot where the three cars are at, that is also a city parking lot as well, so just, I don't know if that's of any value or not from a one-way traffic going out at least, but.
Yeah, this is a city parking lot.
Yep.
But these are individual people's cars.
Yep.
That live upstairs mostly. And so if you have a lot of cars trying to drive in this way, it'd be a big bottleneck. But if you have this closed and this closed and you can have cars drive in here and park and drive out here, I think you're going to solve a lot of problems before you even get started.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Look, I read this stuff. I read the whole thing, from front to back. Any other questions, concerns, comments, ma'am, sir? No? Are you working down there?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Yeah, you'll have a lot of questions. Roger, anything else? Nope. Seeing none, no other questions, concerns, comments? We have a motion on the floor and a second. And vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Do you have any new vendors?
I have, we have a new flower vendor and then I brought in one of my friends, she hand makes like body butters and body scrubs, so I thought that'd be like a fun addition for this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. On to new business this evening, the first of which is the Drug and Alcohol Committee Recommendations, staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director and Staff Liaison for the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee. Our committee met a couple weeks ago to review applications for 2022 drug and alcohol funding. We sent out applications to all of those agencies that were funded. In 2021, we received five applications for funding and the committee is recommending approving three of those applications. Clark Middle School At-Rest Program for 1,500, Project Graduation for 5,000, and the Paces Program for 5,000. And there's an explanation that was in the agenda item for each program. The other two applications were, which were submitted, one is from the Police Department for some AEDs and, how do you pronounce that? Litter? Litters, which are stretchers to use at the amphitheater. And then the other one was from the Fire Department for a patient training simulator. And after discussion, the committee determined that the, these, these pieces of equipment did not meet the criteria for use of the drug and alcohol funds. I think the simulator was 20,000 and the AEDs and litters were 4,800. So the committee is requesting, recommending approval of 11,500 from the Drug and Alcohol Fund for 2022. I'd entertain any questions.
Very good, thank you. Anything else from citizens to add? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the funding in the amount of $11,500 for substance abuse programs as recommended by the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and second by Mr. Thompson. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
I read through the proposals and the things that were submitted, why were the other two not meeting the qualifications for the grant again? Were there specific reasons?
The committee felt that though each of the equipment pieces could be used for drug and alcohol-related events, that the main purpose of it wasn't, it was for more operational needs of the department and not just to treat drug and alcohol patients.
Would that very frequently be the case with fire and police equipment, though? Like, they're doing multiple things.
Well, we've, I mean, we've funded several pieces of equipment for the fire, or the Police Department the last few years, and most of them, except for in 2019, we did fund some UTVs, which probably if the committee was reviewing that now, it probably wouldn't have been approved. But we've done some Drunkbusters pedal carts that are used at the high school for showing what the effects of drunk driving, some fatal vision goggles. Last year, we purchased a, the Kiko Blow-Up, the Drug Dog promotional items, as well as a $24,000 drug identification equipment that will tell the Police Department what is in a specific drug that they, that they confiscate. And a distracted driving system, so those we felt were specific to drug and alcohol. The two pieces that were requested this year, the patient training simulator wasn't really just specific to drug and alcohol patients, and same with the AEDs and leaders, so that's why they weren't. And in 2019 is when we approved the UTVs. At that time, we were, we had revenue of 75,000 we were receiving, so that's another thing that we look at is our, what our balances are in that fund too. We would rather, especially with equipment, try to, because those are one-time larger purchases, to spend it on, you know, if we're going to draw down our cash balances for something that is more specific to drug and alcohol treatment or prevention.
I just had read that there were so many calls that were related to drug and alcohol and probably a lot of offenses as well, so I was just curious why that wasn't specific enough, but thank you very much.
Anything else?
I, I would love to experience what it's like to drive drunk with one of those things, but I really don't want to because it sounded awful.
Officer Cullen could probably hook you up.
Nothing here. Nothing else.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve funding in the amount of $11,500 for substance abuse programs as recommended by the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee. Wood?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So it appears as though now the ending balance will be about 158.5, bottom of the financial impact?
Yes.
That's at the end of 2022. Do you have an expected amount of revenue you'll receive?
Right now, we're estimating 40,000, but it's hard, we get those, or for 2022, but we get those, I think, three times a year and had not gotten our first payment yet.
So you expect the grants next year that you award will equal about 40,000 dollars?
That's what we're, I've got projected for 2023. So, I mean, right now with what we've requested for funding this year, it's close to what we're projecting to take in. So with the, with the School Resource Officer piece that we pay for, we pay for 25% of that salary and benefits out of this fund, along with the 11,500. That's about it, that 40 that we're estimating to take in this year.
And would expect to do similar next year?
Yes, but I mean, hopefully next year and maybe even this year with the concerts ramping up, that's where a lot of our liquor tax comes from, is the amphitheater and the Renaissance Festival. So those hopefully will be higher, but we don't know yet.
And, and those two for the Police and Fire Department could, if they were able to gain more information and specific needs concerning drug and alcohol concerns, could reapply for those grants?
They could reapply. I would say they'd probably need to show that, you know, the, there's, that the, I mean, like I said, we reviewed the applications and felt that from the application, that it would be more of an operational need, not specific to the majority being substance abuse incidents.
Because I can imagine at the amphitheater, the primary concerns are drug and alcohol-related that require EMS. There could be a concert for old people like me and maybe there'd be a heart attack or two without-
Frank Sinatra's gone.
Yep, Frank Sinatra's not coming. I haven't seen their, their list, they're, but most of them-
I think part of it too was the concert season is three or four months out of the year, so are they just going to sit up there and not be used? And so.
Tilly, can just, if I'm remembering correctly, part of the basis for the application is somewhat related to the educational substance abuse component, right? More than it is reacting operationally, is that a fair statement?
It can be prevention, education, I can't remember, there's, at the bottom of the application, it tells all the, because it's a state statute-
Right.
-that we have to follow.
But I think we're, what I'm just trying to, our pinpoint a little bit is that ultimately the committee is going off of the statute that defines exactly what goes into that. I think certainly if there's direction or otherwise from the city council to the committee that you all appoint, and as far as what you would like to see this money go towards and even probably to the concern about what the fund balance is, what you all would like to see that consistently be. So if that's a 10% fund balance based off of, you know, historical averages of, let's say 50,000 dollars, if you want to retain 20,000 dollars in that pot annually, I think that's maybe a financial decision that would certainly help out the committee in their deliberations.
And we would, I mean, we always, we have to carry over what we are expected to fund because like we're awarding for 2022 now, but we're having to use the funds we have on hand right now, so. And we don't know what that's, we don't know what we're going to get for 2022. But the statute reads, monies in the Special Alcohol and Drug Programs Fund shall be expended only for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of services or programs whose principal and forthright purpose is alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, detoxification, intervention in alcohol and drug abuse, or treatment of persons who are alcoholics or abusers.
All right, thank you. Nothing else, we'll move on to our reports this evening. Yeah, it's already, can we already vote on it? We voted on it, I did that after we voted on it, so. Yeah, that's all right, man, that's okay. I make the most mistakes up here, so I still got that covered. Moving right along to our reports this evening, the first of which, the City Managers Report, straight from London, England.
The, I put in the City Manager Report, but this is something we had talked about previously is the base grant, just wanted to give an update on that, that, surprise, surprise, they got a lot of applications for the limited amount of money that they have. We're looking at about another week or so before we would get any notification back on that, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that that is still being discussed and hopefully we'll get something from them in the next 10 days or so. Also, the, the city was awarded the Kansas City Business Journal's Capstone Award for Adaptive Reuse for this building, this project. So that is, again, a metro-wide award for the adaptive reuse category, which is obviously a pretty significant recognition of this effort. So did just want to note that the council is invited to the award reception on the 28th of April. If you're interested in attending that, please let me know by the 31st, a couple days, but that is at 4:30 on the, the 28th of April, which is a Thursday. It is at the Lowe's Hotel in Kansas City, Missouri. But again, if, if you're interested in that, just please let me know, that way we can make sure if there's a quorum or anything like that. But again, a good, a good award, I think there'll be an article coming out at some point in time, kind of encapsulating all the projects that have received awards over, over the year. And then lastly, tonight was our first kind of start of our 2023, painful to say, 2023 budget sessions. So again, we'll have some subsequent reviews of 2021 operations, kind of paving the way for these 2023 discussions. Also want to bring up at the April 11th meeting, I've asked NPR to attend that meeting to just kind of go over what they offer to the city, so they provide our health insurance. It's a large group with other entities, and then our property and liability insurance. There's been some changes in that organization, so again, just want to make sure everybody keeps up with familiarity of exactly what they offer to us. And again, health insurance will undoubtedly be something that will come up as part of the budget, it always does. And going into 2021, our renewals will be here in June, or, excuse me, they, they will go into effect at the end of June. So this is a kind of a prudent conversation. I just bring all that stuff up again with the budget in mind and knowing too that, as I think you heard from at least in a few different occasions, Ms. Brake, Mr. Jennings, I think we all know this, but staffing continues to be a consideration. I had a meeting earlier today with our Public Works Director, Mr. Abart, CDL drivers, as Chris brought up, you know, that, the twofold, one, we're starting to see the issues with supply constraints and transportation related to that, as Frank kind of, and I discussed earlier, that cost to get a CDL now is somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 to 5,000 dollars just in the training process to get that, so it's somewhat adding insult to injury. I think to, and we do have requirements to have Class A CDLs for some of our utility workers, paramedics, as Mr. Jennings brought up, continues to be a, a field that is significant in terms of demand and capacity, police officers are certainly another one. So again, I just, I'm saying all of this to kind of paint the pictures as far as our budget conversations and what we need to look at, as far as just costs to operate, the cost of living experienced by our employees and ultimately what needs to happen on, on that front. Again, this is, hopefully I'm not saying anything that you all don't already know, but again, I just want to make sure that as we continue to go into 2023 and then even 2022 in some respects, there's, there's certainly some challenges ahead. And then lastly, we had talked about previously, and this kind of goes hand in hand with what I just talked about, the water treatment plants. Originally, we were hoping to have a guaranteed maximum price for that project at the end of March right now. We've had to push that back until May, just again, because of the cost, in particular steel seems to be probably the most difficult thing where we can't even get cost estimates beyond, we'll, we'll give you the cost when we ship it to you type of responses. So that obviously makes a contract bidding extremely difficult. And, and again, unfortunately, it doesn't seem like that's going to be something that goes away anytime soon, so again, just want to be upfront with you all of some of those challenges again in the public as far as how we're having to proceed in, in some of these tough conversations we're going to have over the next couple weeks, couple months. So some positivity for the, the night is that my Jayhawks are going to the final four. That's all I have, thanks.
Very good. Yes, that is positivity. Starting down here with Mr. Shannon, any council, city council items?
I can't beat that.
Ma'am?
Just thank you for the wonderful reports tonight, it made such a difference, you know, to what you know, what I know.
Nothing additional to add?
I want to thank city staff for the pothole replacements that have been going on, it's been greatly appreciated. I also noticed here, a few weeks ago, I was in the police station, our new police facility, and I saw that the training room was in use and I found out there were, were animal control officers there. animal control officers there using that. The room was pretty full. I was glad to see it was being used for things like this. Uh, has, I take it it's been used for other things in the meantime also, Chief? I've, I've driven by and it looks like that room has been full a few times, I've seen. So, that's good. Appreciate that. Uh, I think it's a definite asset for this community to have that used like it is with other communities, uh, departments coming here. Like that a lot. Thank you. That's all.
Very good. Uh, speaking of the water issue and the things, uh, cabinets coming down, uh, have you had, been able to reach out to those involved?
Um, yeah, repeatedly. Um, the, the latest, um, news from the contractor is that we will have... There were issues with, um, grounding of the water lines. So, that is, I'm told, being corrected later on this week by Long Electric. And then I've been assured by KBS, the contractor, that, um, the plumbing contractor will be in after the electric contractor sub, um, to chlorinate, disinfect the water system. And that will hopefully correct the issue. At the very least, it'll cancel out the idea that, um, very, oh, I can, I'm not even sure if I can say the word correctly, electrosis, is a issue that happens where you have electric current that goes into a water line and then ultimately that creates, um, um, potential for some corrosion issues. So, um, that will, like I said, hopefully eliminate, eliminate that, uh, concern. But again, I'm on bi-weekly, uh, meetings right now with the contractor, the architects, um, kind of pacing forward with, um, outstanding items. There will be a 11-month punch list in April to kind of go through all the warranty items at the Police Department with their substantial completion being, yeah, March, April, May of 2021. So, before we would hit the expiration on any warranties, that would give us the opportunity to, uh, highlight those items and ensure that they, uh, they don't go to warranty without being corrected first. So, um, the, just since we're talking about it, the landscaping is, is kind of probably the most, uh, visible, um, thing that isn't, uh, done yet. But that, um, will commence here fairly shortly with the planning season starting in April, uh, April 1st. So, as that stuff gets to the greenhouse and what have you, that'll start to get done. But again, there's, uh, there's some things that are outstanding. The city still has retained a fair chunk of money back in retainage. So, we, uh, again, are, are working through those challenges and communicating those things to the contractor and they're, uh, they're correcting them in time.
Well, yeah, thank you very much and I appreciate everybody's, uh, patience, uh, dealing with the frustrations. And I know it's hardest on all of you involved, so I appreciate it and we want to be as supportive as possible, working our way through those. On a different topic, uh, you had information concerning 125 Oak, but the grocery store? Have you had any, that continues to be more and more of a blight. Um, is there any movement on that?
I don't have, um, any specific update on that. I know there was, uh, continues to be some dialogue between us and them and, and ultimately what needs, needs to occur, but, uh, I have not heard of any update as of late.
Well, and, and that's a long process as well. And, um, we, I'll be interested to see what all of our, um, what we can do about those things, what we're able to do and how, if, uh, in changing things and upping our enforcement of ordinances we already have or whatever, whatever, uh, plan, uh, we can, uh, utilize to help protect the property in Bonner Springs.
And, and I think, um, Amber is going to be covering some of those specific items with her, uh, annual report and, and kind of what we've done to date as well as offering some, um, level of discussion about things that could change, um, that you all could take on and, and maybe just better explaining that process and what it all entails.
And I, I know it's a long process. Uh, nothing happens overnight, but these are concerns that have been going on and so I appreciate that greatly. Um, other than that, I didn't have any other additional questions. It is pothole season in Bonner Springs and we're raising a nice big crop. If you happen to see any, please contact the City Hall. Christina Brake, you can pass that along to her. As well as you can also make, uh, and notify the city online on our web page, um, with reporter pothole. And I've also had people, um, reach out to me and ask, how can they report a street light that's out? And I, again, tell them it's easily done. Just call the City Hall and speak with Christina Brake. She's in charge of all of that. Not the, not the turning, not the turning them off, the getting them turned back on. Uh, other than that, I have no other information or questions unless someone has questions for me. We stand adjourned and go Jayhawks.